It is recording right now.
Okay, so I'll open the Town of Bridgewater Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, August 5th, at 2020, August 5th, 2020. I'll read in pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18. And the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No unpleasant attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. The meeting is being recorded, and within 48 hours, we will post the link of the recording on the town's website and or the town's social media page. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. Michael's on now, right?
Yep, I'm here.
I'm Patrick Triscoll, the Chair, Raymond De Jim, Raymond De Jimian, the Vice Chair, Jean Greenough, the Clerk, Michael McDonald, and Stephen Geller. During this meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as roll call votes. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely. Jennifer Burke, Community and Economic Development Director, Elijah Romulus, Assistant Town Planner, Azu Antenero is not with us right now, but may join us, and Leslie Doel, the Office Administrator. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mic will be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project's representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and allows public comment, we ask to use the chat feature to ask your question by listing the name and address and your question. The Chair will recognize the questions in order. You can also use the Raise My Hand feature in the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the Chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. So, Mr. Romulus, the first public hearing we have at 6:30 is a site plan continuation for 500 Cell Street, an application by Derek Swenson for the George H. Mitchell Elementary School, the major site plan, construction of the new George H. Mitchell Elementary School, map 62 lot 19. And this is a continuation, this is our third public hearing on this. We had some outstanding engineering items, and I don't know if you can put up the memo Mr. Romulus received from Antenero on August 3rd, 2020?
The latest was from this morning, August 5th.
Okay, all right, so, all right. In the pack, I just have the August 3rd one. So, do you want to just give us a sense, Mr. Antenero's not with us? Like, I didn't read that one, I apologize. The last one it was August 3rd.
No worries, I can, I'll read it through, and it, in essence, he agrees with what has been presented to the board for approval, but I'll read the memo that he sent this morning. It reads, "I received the project plans, Plan Sheets CF 5.1 and C 6.1, bearing the latest date of August 3rd, 2020, that were dropped off by an agent slash staff of Samiota's Consultants, Inc., in the afternoon of Monday, August 3rd, 2020. The plan sheets, as revised, reflect the comments and the annotations enumerated in my August 3rd email transition below. All of my review comments prior to and including those noted in my August 3rd email transition have been satisfactorily addressed. I would not object to an approval of the site plan and or special permit application by the planning board should it elect to do so. If you have any questions, please give me a call or send an email. Regards, Azu Antenero."
Do you have any board questions for staff? Do any of the project representatives want to speak?
Hi, this is Jeff from Sami Otis. So, we have addressed Azu's comments, and we feel that we've satisfied the, the board's requirements for engineering and layout purposes. If there's anything else, please let us know, otherwise, we would request to close.
Okay, are there any, if there are no board questions, are there any members of the public that would like to ask questions before we take a motion to close the public hearing? I just have one question for Ms. Burke and Mr. Romulus. So, is this a standard approval, that we can attach in conditions of approval like we did, like we would do with a private project?
Nothing short of the standard conditions, unless Ms. Burke has any additional.
You know, I think our standard conditions would be perfectly acceptable in this case.
And there's nothing in our standard conditions that would conflict with the construction of this project?
No.
No. All right, so if there's no more public comment and no more board questions, somebody could make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
So, motion by Ray, second by Michael, any discussion? I have to do this for roll call, I apologize. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. De Jimian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, so, do we have a motion to approve the site plan without standard conditions?
I'll make the motion to approve the site plan with the standard conditions.
Ray, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Was that Michael?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. De Jimian?
Yes.
Mr. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. So, thank you for everybody that participated in that for the school.
Thank you very much.
So, I'd like to take, if we could, take Stonewall Place or Tola Homes out of order? Is that be okay with the board and Mr. Romulus, if you're ready for that?
Yes.
If necessary, I'll make the motion to take Stonewall Place out of order, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know if that's necessary.
It's not necessary.
Okay.
Do you want to bring that request up, Mr. Romulus?
Yes, so, we received a letter from Latola Homes, Inc., requesting that the planning board set the bond calculation, as well as release the covenant on five lots on Stonewall Place.
And I saw a bond calculation, I was like, do we have that bond calculation?
Yeah, so, as of 12, as of this afternoon, Mr. Ladoo had sent a updated calculation, I'm going to bring that up right now. As you can see here, it is set at 59,477, and...
Could you enlarge that, Mr. Romulus, I can't see it? Okay, so, do we have a motion? So, this has not been received yet, though, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So, are you looking for a motion to accept the bond amount and allow for the signature of the covenant, once it's paid?
That is correct.
Does somebody want to make that motion?
Yeah, how do I, how do you want that phrase to, to accept the, the calculation?
I think, I think we want the flexibility to approve the bond, but also be able to go in and sign the covenant, Mr. Doel, correct, once the bond's been placed?
Yes.
So, if you made a motion to the effect that we accept the bond as posted by, you know, Highway Superintendent Ladoo, and upon receiving the funds and confirmation, we can sign the covenant?
Okay, yeah, so I'll make a motion to accept the, the bond in the amount of $59,477, and allow for the signing of the, was it the covenant?
Covenant release.
Covenant release, as appropriate.
Once, once funded and confirmed.
Once funded.
And that would be for all lots on the roadway?
Yeah, because we're asking for the 50% contingency, so...
Right, I just wanted to clarify in the motion.
Oh, okay, yeah, for all lots.
So, do we have a second to Mr. McDonald?
Second.
Mrs. Greenough, any discussion? I should have asked, was there any, and I apologize, I skipped right over. Is there anybody from the public that wanted to comment on it before we vote? I see Mr. Doel has... All right, so, I'll take a vote then. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. De Jimian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, next up on the agenda is we have the 608 Broad Street, West Point Realty Development. This is a special permit site plan for the construction, a construction project which includes four mixed-use buildings, with commercial space on the first floor, residential units on the upper floor, as well as separate parking, separate parking, not to service the buildings. This is in reference to map 21 lots 95, 98, 95 through 98, and, and 202, 204. We did receive, I don't know if you want to bring up your memo or explain the issues that we received the memo on today, Mr. Romulus?
Yes. So...
I can't see it.
So, after reviewing the application...
No, I can't, I can't see it.
Yes, so after reviewing the application, we had met between town staff, and there were several issues that were noted. We also conferred with our town council, and they are as listed regarding public notice. The Butters notifications were for seven of the nine properties that were listed in the project. Because there were not all nine of the, of the properties properly notified, then we can't hold a hearing based on notifying the Butters. In addition to that, we would need confirmation on whether or not the five surrounding towns were notified.
All right, so, so, Mr. Romulus, if you can stop there, just so we're all clear. The application was for nine properties and seven were advertised?
Yes.
So, it's the recommendation to not go forward with the public hearing until it's re-notified?
Yes.
And a new publication is made representing all nine properties included?
Yes.
Do you want to discuss that with the applicant? Are they aware of that, or what do we, is the applicant on the phone, or?
Yes, both of them are on the phone. I see Troy Clarkson is unmuted.
Mr. Chairman, appropriate to speak?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Clarkson, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. My name is Troy Clarkson, I'm the Principal of Clarkson Consulting, and I've been working with the developer, West Point Realty, for several years on this project. We have worked closely with the town for, literally for years, to get this before you. The, the development of the Butters list was done in consultation with the town, and I, I just have to express some disappointment and frustration that we're learning of this development at the hearing, when we've had open lines of communication with the town for quite some time. So, I would, since this is a duly published hearing of the planning board, I would at least ask that we be able to provide an introduction, and then, if there is additional notices that the town now seeks to, to provide, that we'll certainly comply with that, but it, that, we could have already had that done, had, had we known that that was a concern. The, the additional properties in question are not proposed for development, but are proposed to exist as they do now, and simply count towards the density for this project. So, and, and, and the town has been in possession of that list of properties since 2018. So, we, we have at all times worked very hard to work cooperatively with the town. But it, this is, this is new today. I see that the memo is dated the, the 5th, so, I'm good, and I'm just appeal to the common sense of you, Mr. Chairman, and ask that we at least have a dialogue, because we have certainly noticed, properly, based on the information the town provided to us, and the actual properties that are proposed for development.
So, Ms. Burke and Mr. Romulus, legally, we should, should we, or should we not open the public hearing because proper notification was not given?
I would say legally, you cannot open the public hearing because proper notice was not given, and there are many people that were not noticed that would want to know what is going on, and if you open a public hearing and start the presentation of the project, those people would miss out on that presentation. And just to address Mr. Clarkson's assertion that the town was somehow involved in the Butters list, they were the ones that asked for the Butters list from the Assessor's Office, and so they were the ones that identified the parcels in which the parcel list was made, so...
But we can, we can take this opportunity to continue through the memo and try to give the developer some direction as to what we need in terms of deficiencies, in terms of submittals, Ms. Burke and Mr. Romulus?
Yes. So...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
So, Mr. De Jimian, I'm sorry, I guess I'd like to hear from the board in regards to this discussion.
Yeah, I just like to make one comment. I, I have no problem in going over the list that Mr. Romulus has given, assuming that this is information that it has not been part of the original submittal, which should have been, but I don't see discussing any particular part of the project until everything has been submitted at whatever meeting, whenever the next meeting is set. If I'm making myself clear, I'm not sure. In other words, in other words, what I'm saying is, I'm open to discussing issues that need to be submitted, but not necessarily the issues themselves.
Okay, all right, so that's, I think there's two, I think there's two issues. The first issue is, is that, and I went through Mr. Romulus's memo, the first issue is of the notification, so, the, the question is, does the board want to continue in violation of potentially the open meeting law with a presentation, or do we want to have them re-advertise and re-notify before we continue with any presentation?
On that point, I, I can see no other movement, other than re-advertise and set another meeting, before we, I don't think we can open up the meeting.
Okay. Any other comments from the board members?
No.
No, I just echo everything Ray said, I agree completely.
Yeah, I concur with Ray.
So...
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Who is that, Mr. Silva?
Yes, can I ask, it, it's very disheartening to actually have this memo being prepared today. It just seems like if these were issues, and I, we haven't even got into the rest of it, but why was this not something already forwarded to, to the developer?
I don't, I don't know if planning submitted some of it or not, I don't know.
I can't, I think I can address some of that. The issue with the notification on the Butters notices was just discovered yesterday, I believe, and until we had time to speak with our town attorney and other things, that's why we couldn't draft any memo. The other items on this memo have been, they have been made aware that they are items, and they just have not provided them to us in the past.
Okay, so, I guess I'm stuck. Do we have to take a vote not to open the public hearing, or do we just ask them to re-notify and re-advertise?
I don't think, I don't believe you need a vote to not re, not open the public hearing.
Okay.
May I, can, are we going to take a voter, we're, we're not taking a vote, Mr. Chairman? I would just like to make one comment.
Sure.
And that is that I think all of us have driven down Broad Street for years in seeing what bad shape it is, and I think I, I, as other people, would like to see that project move forward. So, I'm not sure why it's taken years to get it going, that, that, I just don't understand that. I've not been part of this process, but I would hope that as we move forward and do set a date for another public hearing, that everything that is required for us to evaluate this proposal be submitted to the Community and Development Office prior to the meeting, so that they and town engineer can go over everything, so you have, when we open up the public hearing, we can be talking about a complete submittal that we can talk about. I, I think we have issues right now. Thank you.
Elijah, I, I'm not managing the, the screen, but somebody has a hand up?
Yes, looks like Mr. Pascal, if you can unmute your mic, then...
Give him the opportunity to speak.
Looks like you're still muted.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Members of the board, I appreciate the time tonight. I also, I share in the, somewhat of the frustration, that list was, was provided by the town, I notified everybody by certified return receipt, all five municipalities were also notified and have confirmed the receipt. So, I'm also, I share Troy's frustration, that why wasn't this looked at a month ago? I may be lacking some components to this, and I'd like to know what they are, so I can get them to you, but in the meantime, the hope was that we could at least open the discussion, have a dialogue, and, and find out, this is a fairly comprehensive project, and therefore will probably require some additional input from many different folks, and, and, and we'll certainly solicit a list of needs. So, I thought we could at least get that dialogue underway, get the list, and make ourselves whatever, because even if it's perfect, it's not going to be perfect. People will need something, people will ask for something, and, and will demand some additional updates on whether it's from Larry or the architect or myself, or Troy. So, it's frustrating to know that we can't even begin to hold it, have a dialogue. Well, thank you.
So, I think, I think, Mr. Romulus, that if we want to continue through the... All right, so, so, let's do this. So, do, Ms. Burke, Mr. Romulus, do you want a motion to ask them to re-advertise and re-notify, or is that clear now, we can move on?
However, the board would like to handle it. I know, I don't think we need a motion, but if you feel more comfortable doing that, that's fine.
Does somebody on the board want to make a motion?
I'm unclear. What kind of motion do you want?
Well, the public hearing, we, we have people on here for a public hearing. Are we, are we not opening the public hearing, or are we opening the public hearing?
I'm under the impression that we are not opening a public hearing. I don't see why we can't simply set a date in the future for the public hearing, and during that time, Butters that have not been notified will be notified, and all the pertinent material that is missing in this particular project be submitted to the Community and Development.
All right, so, so, why don't we just, they're going to have to submit everything they need for a new public hearing, so, let's just deal with this one right now. Do we have a motion to not open the public hearing and ask them to re-advertise and re-notify?
I'll make that motion if you need that.
All right, by Jean, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
By Mr. De Jimian.
Chairman, could I ask that you at least make that motion to continue to a date certain?
It's going to be up to you, I think, to read, to, to work, isn't that correct, Ms. Burke, to make sure that we get the advertisement in and, and the Butters list done and all that? You'll, you'll set the, you'll set the meeting date in the office, based on new application, correct?
We got the Butters list, and we...
Right, but...
May I suggest, just for the amount of review needed for this type of project, at least, I would say the end of September or beginning of October for a meeting?
All right, but that, but that can be dealt with in the office, because we're not continuing anything, right? It's going to be, it's going to be up to the applicant to re-advertise and to re-notify based on the nine properties, so that's up to the applicant, and a date can be set in consultation with the planning, is correct?
And should the applicant contact the community?
Well, that's, Ms. Burke, you asked that?
So, if, because the, because it hasn't been, the meeting hasn't been opened, then it can just be set for another day, it doesn't have to be set by the board.
But they have to know exactly what they need, so that we don't go through this again.
So, that, so, they're going to get a copy of this letter, right? So, other, you know, the way I'm, I'm kind of reading this is... Even though that, even though that is...
Mr. Chairman, can we see the contents of the letter?
All right, so...
No one else has seen this letter, so can we see the rest of the letter? Because it's hard to respond to it, because my understanding is that if below this here now, you're going to show us things that he needed to provide, the question would be is, why was the application deemed complete, and we got to tonight's meeting?
So, could I, I, I think we should, I think we should go through all the things and have a discussion with the applicant. I just want to determine, we have a motion and a second, and not hold the public hearing. Do we want to set a date, or do we just want the planning office to handle that with the applicant, once they deem the, the application complete? Ms. Burke?
I don't vote, so I don't know why I hear, I mean, that's...
Well, would you rather handle the application, the requirements, and the meeting date in the office? Would you rather set a date now, based on Mr. Romulus's recommendation?
Either, either way, it's time to meet, whatever the board decides.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Romulus, you have a date in mind of what?
I would say the first meeting in October, if that's...
Ridiculous.
What, what, I don't know what that's based on.
In six weeks?
To be able to advertise, review, discuss what is needed for the project application.
All right, so...
Sird.
With all due respect, the, the, the plans, some of the plans have been in the possession of... With all due respect, the, the, the plans, some of the plans have been in the possession of the town for over a year, and that we have been discussing this and negotiated a developer's agreement over the course of many months. And so we would just respectfully ask that since most of this information has been in the possession of the town for some time, that we not have to wait another six weeks. And I'm sure, certain, whatever additional information is on this memo that we can produce in very short order. So we would, I, I agree with the sentiments of Mr. Jemmy in that this, this has taken a long time to get to where we are. This is a seminal project for this community. And we urge the board.
So.
So what, what, we will, we will set the, we will set the meeting date in the office.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think it's better if, because the reason we set a meeting date in public is if it's a public hearing continuation. If you guys can work with the applicants to get the stuff in early or on time, and we can have a meeting sooner, I'd rather leave that flexibility open so that we can have it in August. So why don't we just, we have, we have a motion and a second to not open the public hearing tonight. Let's not set a date. Let the planning office handle it with the applicant. And if we can get a soon date, that would be preferred.
Yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
So are we asking to only re-notify the abutters of Hale and Stetson because all the others have been done? I, I choose not to have to give, to re-notify everybody once again. But perhaps they would get notice that it's a continuation of tonight's meeting?
The only way you cannot re-notify everybody is if they set a date and time starting tonight. That would be.
There's no need to do this all over again. It's, it. Lot of work, lot of effort. All I did was notify all the abutters from the list that I received by the town.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be better if we went through the memo, just so that we're, we know what we're all talking about.
Alright, so, so we've, we've a motion and a second not to open the public hearing. Ms. Troy, you have, you have, who made that motion? Who made that second?
I, I think it's Jean and then Ray seconded.
Yep, okay. So let's just vote on that, and then we can go through the list. And then if we want to set a date, we can set a date. So do we have any more discussion on not opening the public hearing? Alright, so I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes.
Mrs. Verena?
Yes.
Mr. Jemmy?
Yes.
And I, yes. Okay, so why don't you go through the rest of your memo, Elijah, and we can tweak it, add to it, and make sure a copy gets to the applicant so they know exactly what they need to do?
So after the notice, quest issues, we needed a town council determination based on section nineteen of the bylaw. So there are nine properties that are considered for the project per the application. The question is, section nineteen point zero four eleven of the mixed-use central business district bylaw states parcels and contiguous ownership shall be designed as one project. So I asked the town council just to determine exactly what that would mean in regards to this project. And so in, in red and bold are his answers to my questions. For purposes of answering the questions below, I will make the assumption that parcels sixty, seventy, seventy-six and eighty, also known as H, G, F and E, which are right here, are all under the same ownership. And parcels sixty-three, sixty-five, seventy-three and fifteen, shown as A, B and C, are all also under the same ownership, as you can see. So my question was, what parcels, being A through H, are considered in contiguous ownership? Council's answer, assuming parcels sixty, seventy, seventy-six and eighty-six, also known as H, G, F and E, are under the same ownership, they are parcels in contiguous ownership and would be considered one project under the ordinance. Assuming parcels sixty-three, sixty-five, seventy-three and fifteen, also known as A, B and C, are under the same ownership, they are parcels in contiguous ownership and will be considered one project under the ordinance. Parcel eighteen, known as D, is a separate parcel. So that understanding is that these three clusters, being D, E, F, G and H, A, B and C, are considered three separate parcels in regards to the section nineteen point zero four eleven bylaw. I also asked, what is considered a project for density purposes based upon the foregoing parcels sixty, seventy, seventy-six, eighty-six, which are the larger H, G, F and E, they are considered a project for density purposes. So those four lots being one project. The three lots sixty-three, sixty-five, seventy-three and fifteen are considered a project. So all this one project, all this one project, and then D, a project in terms of density purposes for calculation, as well as the contiguous ownership. So based on that zoning determination, it is my understanding that the applicant would have to revise the application and the project to be able to comply with the zoning bylaw as determined by our town council. I can stop there.
Yes, please. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Sure. Mr. Claxton, do you mind if you goes through the whole letter and then we can come back to the different sections? Is that okay?
It's, it's your meeting, Mr. Chairman. Happy to, but I, this is a, a critical eleventh hour point that's in direct conflict with a signed agreement by the town manager. So, but yes, please.
Alright, no, if you want to address it, go ahead, sir. Go.
So while I respect the, the work of the assistant town planner, the, the town and the developer over several months negotiated the developer's agreement that's required by this portion of the zoning ordinance. And in fact, section. Let me just find it here. Section number F of the developer's agreement that is signed by West Point and the town manager as required in the zoning ordinance. Number F, it states, "For the purposes of this agreement, all parcels are to be considered one project as provided in section nineteen point oh four eight ten." So during the development of this agreement, we negotiated with the town in good faith. This issue came up, and notwithstanding the opinion of the town attorney, the town manager, in his capacity as the CEO of the community, bound the town agreeing that they were all one parcel. So I would say it's not only irregular, but I would respectfully suggest inappropriate for the town now, after we've executed a signed agreement, to change the rules and to say they are indeed three separate projects. I mean, that goes against everything we've negotiated for well over a year.
So, Ms. Ms. Burke, although, although they're considered three separate parcels, so to speak, they can, and that's three separate projects, so to speak, they can still be designed as one for circulation, parking and things of that.
That's correct. And I don't believe that regardless of the agreement with the town manager, that he has the ability to waive zoning or override any type of zoning.
Alright, why don't you continue, Mr. Romulus?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one question before you go further?
Sure, Mr. Sol.
Alright, that, those comments are from council. Are those in the form of a letter from council, and when was that provided?
I believe an email, correct, Mr. Romulus? Or was it on this letter?
It was an email provided this afternoon.
This afternoon?
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can you continue, Mr. Romulus?
I've been working on this for, for four years.
Yes, I'll continue. So the last part of this was just that we did have some missing information regarding the application, just in terms of plans and reports. For the existing conditions site plan, we would need it for all nine properties and to have it stamped by a professional land surveyor and professional engineer.
And do, do we only have that? When I look at the packet, Mr. Romulus, I only see a existing conditions with a PLS stamp for four of the nine?
That is, there actually is not a PLS stamp.
I, I think, I think, I think Silver did.
Excuse me.
For the four, for the four lots on the east, on the west, excuse me. I believe, I believe there is an existing condition for all four of those lots, correct?
Yes, correct.
But nothing on the west side or on Hudson Street, correct?
I would like to stand corrected here that the existing conditions plan is stamped by a land surveyor, so I don't know what Elijah's looking at.
But, but, Mr. Silver, that's not the point. The point is that it's only for four lots, correct?
Correct. That is correct, but he's not record as saying that it's not.
No, I, I think, I think what he's saying is that we need it for all nine, and that's.
I understand what he's saying, but I'm, I'm commenting on what he said.
Okay, alright, so, so we have, so we have, we have that for four, we need it for the other five.
That's correct.
Okay.
The same goes for a proposed site plan. We would need it for all nine properties.
Alright, so I, just, can I ask a question on that one? Because I do see, I do see plans from SEAs, from Silver Engineering, and Mr. Silver's with us now. And it looks like the only thing that Mr. Silver is stamping in terms is grading and drainage, if I'm looking at that correctly, and the existing conditions.
And utilities.
Has, and utilities. Has a site plan been done by a registered engineer? Because I just see the architectural rendering. Has a site plan, Mr. Silver, been done by you for any of these properties?
I guess it depends on how you define site plan. We provided components of a site plan as requested. We did a utilities plan, and we did a grading and drainage plan.
But as far as open space, circulation, parking, that has not been provided.
I think, I think you should direct that to the architect.
So, so we need that for all nine properties potentially, correct, Mr. Romulus?
That's correct. Yes.
Continue. Well, so, so I would add, Mr. Romulus, just to give them clear direction, that a proposed site plan for all nine properties stamped by a PLS and PE, we want a professional engineer. I believe that's what Mr. Antonero said for the survey, for the asset plan.
Yes, I can make that, that edit. And so finally, the last one that I had was just that we need drainage plans and stormwater management reports for all nine of the properties stamped by a professional engineer.
Now, we did receive that for the four lots on the west side, correct, Mr. Romulus?
Yes.
But only two of those, according to the town engineer, and he's not here, so I don't want to speak for, but only, I saw on the plans, only two of them, only two of those lots have had test pits done, correct?
I believe so.
So in addition to that, to make sure they know what they need to do so we're ready for the next meeting, that they, they want to have test pits coordinated with Mr. Antonero. Mr. Silver, I might be looking at that wrong, but there's four, there's four lots on the west side, but only two show test pits. Could they just be missing from the plan?
I, I, I believe that they were test pits done on all those properties. Well, I say not all four, because one of them is sixty, the old bullet area, and that one actually has its drainage on the adjacent property.
That is not coming down.
So that would not, that would not be, there would not be test pits on that property.
But they should, they should be on what I would refer to as the old friendlies. I saw the drainage design, but I don't see any test pits.
I, I don't believe that there were test pits done in the pavement on that, on that site. There were test pits done. I don't know if it was, I thought it was more than two.
But, but that's, I mean, the, the point is, is I just coordinate with Mr. Antonero for that. We don't, I mean, I'm not an engineer and I don't want to pretend to be one, so. Anything?
So that, that concludes my memo.
So Elijah, I just, Mr. Romulus, I'd just like to add that we need a commercial parking calculation as well. And there are other sections that pertain to mixed use in the town, such as three point three oh one, three point, three point three one oh one, three point three oh two, six eleven, and then the parking and assignment. You should add that to the memo.
If, yes, I'll include that.
I don't mean to do all the talking. Board comments, questions, staff?
My only comment, I'm just gonna repeat myself. This memo is, my understanding is delineating what is missing from what we need in order to evaluate this. So that if, once another meeting is set, we can assume that this data will be provided and will be evaluated prior to the meeting, and that we'll be able to move forward on this project then. I, I, I for one, want to see this move forward. I also want to see this done properly. And I think that's critical. Thank you.
So have we seen the extent of the, the memo? Is that the end of it?
Yes, that was the end of it. And, Mr. Mr. Romulus, can you make sure we provide that to the applicant?
That tomorrow?
As soon as possible, and have that updated as we discussed.
Yes, I'll have that to you guys, to the applicants tomorrow.
And.
Are we, are we to assume that once that list is completed, that this will be the extent of that list?
Ms. Burke and Mr. Romulus?
Well, I would say that until the town engineer does his review, I would say that he may request additional information.
Okay, fair enough.
Is it, you know, I, I, I don't know, Ms. Burke, because I wasn't privy to the, the prior meetings. Has the applicant met with the town engineer? And would it be wise for them to set up a meeting with the town engineer prior to setting up the next meeting?
We, we did have a, I believe we did have a remote virtual meeting with the town engineer a couple of weeks back, so, but it may not be a bad idea to have another one once he starts his review.
Is there a contact for him?
I can send you his email.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And then if, if they could also circle back with you, Ms. Burke and Mr. Romulus, in regards to the site plan requirements, I know.
I would direct all those questions to Mr. Romulus.
Just in terms of, you know, making sure they comply with the open space requirement, the landscape requirement, parking requirement, et cetera.
Yes, I can get that to the applicants, along with my memo, tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a final question?
Sure, Mr. Claxton.
The, the issue of the parcels being one project as agreed to by the town manager, I, I. I, I, looking for guidance from, from you as to how we reconcile that. We've been operating under that agreement for a very long time, and so this opinion that was just shared with us tonight is in direct conflict with that. And how do you propose we reconcile that before the next meeting?
Maybe a meeting with the zoning enforcement officer would be best, Ms. Burke?
You could do that, or if you would like to provide a, a letter with your argument, we can have the town attorney review that, and, and we could do it that way. I mean, either one. The town attorney has a pine, and so going to the zoning enforcement officer now might be things backwards, but-
Well, maybe he can at least interpret it though for, that's what I was looking, because if, if it can be, because I think, I think the zoning says it can still be designed as one project. It's just that some of the units may have to, and some commercial space may have to come across the street, correct? But, but parking can still be shared, and circulation and things of that nature can still be shared, correct?
Okay. The zoning enforcement officer should be able to tell you that, yes.
But I think, Mr. Clarkson, I'm not, I'm not trying to push it off, but I think maybe talking to Mr. Solari in regards to how to handle that would, would be best.
Okay, and, and, and we'll, we'll reach out to Mr. Rollins as well, if that's all right.
Sure. Is there anything else in addition to this memo that we should get the applicant? Was it, was, I, I saw those under a review, Mr. Romulus, is there anything from that review that I think it may have already been sent to the applicant, that we should send, like open space? And you said you were going to handle that, correct?
Well, I, I cannot make a full review without-
You can't hear him.
I can't make a full review without all of the materials submitted.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Silver?
I, I first want to say that my only involvement has been on those, really those four parcels that I thought was, was the extent of the project. I wasn't aware that the others were part of this project. But my real comment is this, I've been before this board many times with site plans, and when I make a site plan submittal, it is not deemed complete until somebody goes through and checks everything. And if there is something that needs to be taken care of before a date is set for a meeting, and we go through advertising and everything else, we, that's how it's done. And I'm just a little bit miffed as to how Mr. Clarkson and Mr. Pascal have been brought to the point where they're at a meeting, thinking they're going forward with a public hearing, and then now being told that their package is not complete, and that there's other things that they need to do. I, I, I just don't quite understand that.
Anybody want to answer, or do we want to? Alright, I, you know, the one thing, just looking at the, the plans, I think, you know, Mr. Silver had done a thorough job on the, you know, utility plan, the existing conditions, the, the grading plan. I just, I've never, in all my years on the board, I've never had an architectural site plan. So hopefully, an engineer can, you know, do the site plan going forward and tie everything together and make sure it complies with the zoning and the, the rules and regs of the And hopefully, staff can help assist that.
I'd just like to make one comment, Mr. Chairman. That is, that if, in the ongoing discussion regarding zoning and other things, if Mr. Clarkson or anybody else talks to the building inspector or people outside that the community development office, that the community and development office be notified of what the discussion was about.
Well, should, shouldn't the, should, should the, Ms. Burke, should they go through you, or?
No, they can, they can contact the building inspector on their own.
No, I'm sending the town attorney.
No, I, I can't answer that.
I'm just confused, can I just ask, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I'm, I'm confused as to what the question is for Steve Solari. Specifically, what, what, what is he to determine?
I think what, and if I understood it correctly, Mr. Clarkson asked me for some guidance on the zoning determination. I can't give any, I mean, I can't give guidance other than the way I would, which would be that each parcel would have to comply with the zoning regulations, but it, but it could be designed as one project still. I don't see why it couldn't be designed as one project, it's just that the east side would house the commercial space and, and, and residential density that's allowed on the east side, and the west side would house the commercial space and the residential unit that's allowed on that side. But in terms of parking and circulation and things of that nature, landscaping, it could be designed as one project, and you could have shared parking across the street. Because that zoning allows, in, in the central business district allows off-street parking, off-site parking within, I think, four hundred feet, so, that's the way I would interpret the, the zoning interpretation. But I, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not the building inspector, so I think if you want clear direction on that, you should go to the zoning enforcement officer, who is Mr. Solari.
Done. Thank you.
So, with that being said, do we want to, do we, do you want to motion, Ms. Burke or Mr. Romulus, to send this memo revised as discussed to the applicant?
I don't need a motion for that.
Alright, so we, we don't have anything to close, are there any, we can't take any public comment because it's not a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
So hopefully, what they need to do going forward is clear, and once there is a complete package, we can re, you know, reset the, the public hearing, once we have a, as Mr. Silver said, a complete package. I think that's important.
When, when can we have this updated memo?
Tomorrow. Mr. Romulus?
You'll have it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're going to leave it up to the, the planning office to set that, that date, and work with them to read, et cetera, so. Alright, so if there's no other comment, are we good to move on? Alright, so, if you could scroll down on the agenda, Mr. Romulus, so I can see where we're at. So we have minutes to be approved from seven fifteen twenty twenty. Has everybody read the minutes, seen the minutes? Are there any amendments?
I didn't see the minutes, I didn't find them.
I don't see them in the packet either, so, do we want to just hold off and have Ms. Thor, Mr. Romulus resend those?
Yes, maybe my computer will be fixed by then, and I can make any edits.
Do we have any, Gene, CPC or anything in the meeting? Do we have any board committee liaison reports?
CPC is working on the Central Square Congregational Church request. And I think we've got another meeting July, next, I mean, August, next week, to hopefully finalize that.
Alright, great. And then, is there any directors' reports from Ms. Burke and Mr. Romulus?
No reports on my end.
Ms. Burke?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Alright, if there's nothing else, I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Let me find my roll call list again.
Who made the second?
I did, great.
Ray?
Yep. Hey, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Take it easy, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good week.